Welcome to the special meeting of Tuesday, July 30th, 2013. Calling the meeting to order for further discussion after tabled motion from Tuesday, July 23rd. The first item that we had on the table was the Town Road Radio System Authorization for the Town Manager to Negotiate and Execute a Contract with Harris Corporation for the Design, Purchase, and Installation of a Complete Three-Site Radio Communication System. That motion was tabled for further time to read through the manual that we received last Tuesday night, so I'm calling that back to order for discussion. I know that councilors had advised Jeff and Ray Ann that they would be emailing any questions that they had to help, and that the reason for the tabling was because we had received the manual, people wanted to have the time to review the information that was contained within. Do any councilors have further questions? Did you get your answers to your questions? Do you want to ask your questions and have the Town Manager review them? Councilor Cocken?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't need to have the Town Manager, you know, read the answers to the questions, but I just had a couple of follow-ups to those questions, if it's appropriate now. And one of the questions indicated that there was a -- is it possible that the system could be installed by the end of this year? The way that answer was referenced, it almost sounded like it could actually be done by the end of the year, if obviously, you know, it got approved tonight.
Okay, you're with us, Keith.
Okay, good.
I think the general consensus is that it takes a year to build the system. I think if we were in an emergency system or emergency situation, then we would work with the vendor to see if there was something we could do to expedite it.
Okay. It was just a way a question was answered.
I know exactly which one you're talking about.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And one of the questions I had was there was, I think Keith had indicated that the price that Harris had quoted for our system was like the lowest he had seen anywhere. And then in one of the answers, there was a citation that Orleans County, New York, recently awarded a three-site system at a cost of $6 million, but that has a lot more users, that the infrastructure cost was closer to $4 million. Are there others that he was aware of, or was, did?
There are. Some of the, and we conferenced Keith in, some of that is confidential information because there are bids in process, so that he was not at liberty to divulge that information publicly. He has shared those with me, and I've tried to contact a couple more. We do know that the bids for the system in New Britain came in at about $4.3 million and roughly $3.6 million, and the awarded vendor now has the price up to $5 million, and that is a four-site, six-channel system with roughly the same number of users.
All right. And I just, I'm gonna, this is of the Town Manager, I'm just gonna go back. When we had the current system that got put in, the Motorola system, was that, and remind me, because I wasn't on the council at this time, was that as a result, did we pay for that out of the bond that was part of the police station? So it was one bond for the police station and for the whatever, two and a half million?
It was up to $2.9?
I think the bond, the original bid price was $2.4, the ultimate price was $2.9 million.
Okay, all right.
It was out of that bond.
Okay, all right. So when people say, well, you're still paying for it, that means that the bond for the police station, the radio together
Right.
Still has another, whatever, you know, five, 10 years or so to run.
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay. All right. Those are the only remaining questions beyond what you answered, and very fully, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other councilors have comments, questions?
If I may, I know we discussed this, and some of the information that I went through, Ray Ann, maybe you could enlighten the council in case they don't know, but with the Harris system, or if you could just say between Harris and Marcus, between the performance and coverage guarantees on the system, and also the acceptance testing, how that would play out, so if you could, or maybe Keith, since he's on the line there, could just expand on that a little, so we understand what we're dealing with here.
Yeah, sure. Keith, did you hear that? Keith?
Actually, no, I did not hear the question.
All right. The question was, could you talk about the performance guarantees and the coverage guarantees and the acceptance guarantees that are in the Harris proposal, and in comparison with what was sent to us by Marcus?
Okay, sure. The coverage guarantee is actually twofold. The first part of that is outdoor coverage at 95% of the borders of the town. The way that is tested is there is a piece of equipment that's placed inside of a vehicle, and all of the town is divided into grids, and then there is a continuous drive test that collects hundreds of thousands of data points. Every grid is then averaged, and we take a look at every grid, and 97% of those must pass. That's on the coverage piece. Then there's an added piece of coverage where we add a factor of 16 dB, and I know that doesn't mean anything, but it's a factor that approximates or simulates a building. And then that test is also performed to determine that with that factor added, that 95% of the town is covered with this factor for building penetration. Then the next piece of that is, is that there's an extensive test plan performed on the actual system itself, and that's all of the features and functions of the system, all of the failover mechanisms, all of the microwave equipment, all of the console gear. So there's a top-to-bottom separate test that's performed for all of that equipment. And every one of those tests must pass in order for the town to accept that system, and that is contractually guaranteed, and there is a performance bond attached to that. On the Marcus proposal, we did not actually get to a point to discuss those particular items. There was nothing in the initial proposal that indicated that there was a coverage guarantee provided, or how it is that we would test it. That doesn't mean that you could not get that in there in some fashion and for some cost. Simply, that was not part of the discussion at the time, because we did not go through a proposal process with them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Keith.
Other councilors?
I just have some points. I went home Tuesday after the meeting last week, and often as I do, rehashed what went on during the meeting, and went through the binder that we received that evening. So I wanted to share some thoughts that I had after reading that binder. I thought that the presentation was helpful. Our radio consultant gave us the background and definitions to terms to help us understand the status, the current status. And Ray Ann spoke to the timeline when staff began to research the issues and began searching for solutions for the impending end-of-life situation for the radio system. Some of the things that the council has worked towards, putting good processes in place and following them. We've done this with financial practices, capital project planning, and it makes sense for the radio system. An important difference in a process this time is the performance contract bond to help protect the town against a repeat of the current system problems. Keith outlined the process standards put together to pre-qualify potential radio system manufacturers. It made sense to work with manufacturers to get the best pricing for the system that would work in this town. I think it makes sense to repeat those process standards that were used and then applied to both manufacturers that were reviewed. Number one was overcoming existing coverage deficiencies, overcoming existing backhaul, which were the microwave deficiencies, overcoming existing reliability deficiencies, compliance with the P-25 trunking standards and Phase II capable hardware, high availab, excuse me, availability control architecture with redundancy and failover features, providing a modern IP-based platform with sustainability projections of 15 to 20 years, providing a comprehensive and affordable long-term maintenance plan, and demonstrating equipment implementation and maintenance capabilities through reference for P-25 simulcast trunk systems with similar scope and size. In the report that was given to us on that meeting, on page two in the binder, there was an important point, I think, to review, and it was a quote from that. At the end of the pre-qualification process, the town requested system proposals from Harris Corporation and Casidian Communications. Motorola was not asked to participate in the procurement process due to pending litigation and a history of performance issues in the town. The two other providers of P-25 trunk systems, EF Johnson and Tate Communications, were eliminated from consideration because each are new to the P-25 trunk simulcast market and cannot demonstrate a history of performance with system, similar system requirements, and that was Process Standard Eight. I do support the proposal that has come forward, and believe that only Harris and Casidian had the bench strength that demonstrated that they could meet the eight process standards that were set. I think we're at a critical point due to the issues in the last several weeks that we've experienced, and I think we've approached this process using good standards, consistently applied them, and used a consultant that we hired to help us mitigate the current performance issues and help plan the next phase. And when Trot Communications came on board with the town, it was after we had had a radio consultant in place, and we had significant difficulties with the system early on, and it took time to change that consultant who really wasn't helping us at that particular point, and Trot has been very consistent and objective through their work with the town, in my opinion.
Comments?
Sean?
Yeah. Councilor Martinari?
Thanks, Donna. I don't have any real significant questions. Most of what I submitted since our last meeting has been responded to. I'm not at the place that the mayor is at with respect to this, for several reasons. Most significantly, looking at it as best I can objectively, we essentially, in my opinion, have one completed and submitted bid for this process. And I think a lot of good work has been done to get that on the table, but I am comfortable with the fact that we only have the one. And Casidian has submitted, as I said, an estimate, which they elected not to go through the engineering process to spend the time and money to do that, for obvious reasons. I think that they didn't want to commit those resources, so certainly their choice to do that. But since the time that we've had this submitted to us for review a month and a half ago, we've had several folks that have come forward and expressed interest in participating. And I don't know, as of this moment, whether those companies are equally qualified to Harris, but for such a big-ticket item, I'm not comfortable signing off on behalf of our community to put this item on the table, and of course, we don't have the public voting on this like they did on the original radio system as part of the referendum. So I think we have a bigger obligation to be sure we're representing the concerns of the public on an item this big. So I'm not there, I think a lot of work has been done, as I said, but I'm just a huge way away from being able to say I could sign off on this, so that's where I'm at.
Councilor Cocken?
Yeah. I'm gonna echo some of what Paul said. When we purchased the current system, we did go out to a vote by the community, so the residents had an opportunity to vote up or down on the radio system, as well as the, obviously, as well as the police station. They certainly, as I recall, pretty overwhelmingly endorsed it. We were now basically going to be purchasing this through a 10-year lease, and I think on average, we'll probably be paying about $400,000 a year, excuse me, over the 10 years. That's a lot of money. I mean, it's a lot of money from the taxpayers from Weathersfield. And I think we, as Paul said, I think we have a higher obligation, because we're doing this without the benefit of residents being able to vote on this purchase, we have an obligation as a council to ensure that we're getting the needed system, and I have no doubt that we need a new system, but we have a higher obligation to ensure that we're getting it for a competitive amount. The work that I think our consultants have done, and the work that the town staff has done, has been wonderful, and the binder they put together and their ability to educate laymen on this, I think, has been excellent. So I have absolutely no complaints about the work that's been done to support this. But again, this is gonna be, you know, on average, $400,000 a year, $4 million over 10 years. And I don't think that I can go to the residents and say, we buying this because we're getting a system that is gonna, that we're gonna be able to use for the next 15 or 20 years, you know, assuming that the quality is gonna be there, but that we're doing this at the right price. I just can't do that. It may be the case, but I can't do that because of the way that we've arranged, that we've gotten to this point of voting on not only the purchase, but also a 10-year lease for it. I do not, I have no question, I do not question the town attorney's judgment, that we do not have to put this up for a vote. I think that that would be an option, if we bought it a different way, through general obligation bonds. But we're not, we're buying it through a lease. I don't have a question as to whether that's legal, that we can do it this way, so that's not my issue. My issue is that if we're gonna buy it this way, we have to have, we really have a higher obligation, the residents, to ensure that we're spending their $4 million in a cost competitive way, and I'm not there yet, so I can't vote in favor of this tonight.
Councilor Winozis?
So this must be an election year, I guess. I've never, I've never heard of somebody or a group of people that have been so concerned about a process 18 months after we started this, and Ray Ann and the Town Manager have put so much time into it, and we agreed as a council that this was the process we were going to embark on. We sat at a retreat, and we all well knew what the process was gonna be. And so to hear now that we're questioning the process is a little disappointing. If there's certain questions with other vendors that you seem to have a liking to, let's get those answered now. We have our consultant on the line, we have Ray Ann here, I think we can ferret that out. I think there was a significant amount of information here that would lead us to believe that our process was completely correct in what we did. So if there's a question on those, on the one particular vendors that maybe you have some relationship with, then let's talk about it now. Why should we wait? I mean, if we're gonna go through a whole nother process, a different bidding process, then wouldn't we use the same criteria that we've already been using? The answer, I mean, that's a rhetorical question. Obviously, we're gonna use the same criteria. So if that's the case, unless we're willing to lower the standard with a different type of a system, or we're gonna accept an untested system, like the Tate system and others, then there's no reason to change this road we're on. So I'm a little disturbed by the actions some councilors are having now over this process. I'm not willing, for one, to take the risk of a price increase and the additional time for this RFP process. We already know the build is gonna take about 18 months, and if we go through a bid process, it's gonna take another six months. So we're gonna have additional costs to repair what's already in existence, that we know isn't working properly, and then we're gonna have any potential cost in the next six months. So we're talking about a 24-month process if we drag this out for the reasons that you have, which I really question. So I think we should just get through it now and answer your questions. You guys have asked a lot of questions, and you've got them answered. So what's unclear, so we can help get this thing resolved?
Deputy Mayor?
If I may, I, with the comments that were mentioned, I looked at this in some different light also, and when Marcus Communication came at our last meeting, you know, I, things were brought to light, and I had asked for additional time, and I thought another five or six business days to get more information would make me a little more comfortable, and I was glad I did that, I have to say. You know, the systems you have seem to work in different areas, and I understand you're in a little bit different marketplace, and you're more of a third party than some of the large, big boys go. And with that said, I think in a lot of cases, you'd probably do an excellent job, and I greatly appreciate that. But, and I also understand that the attorneys, as much as I don't agree with some of the statements, as far as doing an RFP, I guess, from what I've read from our legal counsel, that a judgment was made, and the judgment was that we didn't have to go out to an RFP. From doing my timing, I think an RFP would be more than 180 days or another six months. So that I have a large question on, because that just adds to the timetable. As far as a vote by the residents in a referendum, you know, we went out to referendum because the police station at the time, and the radio station and other things were packaged altogether, and that's how the referendum went, and that's the people voted on. But I think to have a referendum on something of this nature going forward, and this is my opinion, would be that we would have to educate many of the townspeople on what is involved and how technical this type is. And I still, from reading this whole package, there are a lot of technical things that I don't understand. My father was in the communications business at the state police for over 40 years, and this type of, this type of system compared to what they had is like night and day. But, you know, I think if they had that 40 or 50 years ago, I think they would have probably, you know, been beneficial to the police departments. The performance guarantee was a very big concern with mine, the coverage guarantees, and then the acceptance testing to make sure it works correctly. Once again, I, you know, I appreciate you coming forward and making your proposal and what you can do, and I'm sure that would work in other towns, and I know you have done that, because I've checked with other towns, again, from the list that you gave and all, and they had, they had good praise for you, I have to say, and I appreciate that. My big concern is, and this goes to a different light, to wait additional time, I think cost could mean a life. And I, you know, without a doubt, I've heard that, not from just, you know, some of the people from the fire department or the police department, but I've heard it from residents, and I've heard it from a lot of elderly people that are concerned about that. So as much as I see Councilor Martinari's point and Councilor Cocken's point about, you know, the vetting process, perhaps maybe six months ago or eight months ago, we should have maybe gone down a little bit different path. I don't know. But at this rate, I think my vote tonight would be, and I'm hoping I'm making the right decision, but to have a fiduciary responsibility, and that's why I was elected here, and I'm probably the most conservative person on this council, but I think my vote will have to go with the Harris system because of all the facts that I read. Thank you.
No, I just wanna make one, you know, Stathley's saying it's an election year, and, you know, that's not in my mind, I guess, but I understand where he's coming from, and that's been, I guess, maybe sounds good for public fodder, but the reality is, we haven't really heard from the public on this. And this isn't about elections, this is about a process that I think we have to just be sure about. It's a big-ticket item. I don't think that the work that's been done by our staff is something that I feel is a question in my mind. I think particularly Ray Ann's work behind the scenes, John as an advisor with us, Keith's work in terms of consulting, the work there is exceptional. But I think when I look at the documentation that led to our presentation back in June, I'm left with the same concern that we elected not to entertain a bid for Motorola for the reasons that have been articulated, that I don't myself necessarily agree with. But that being what it said, we really only have one bid, in my mind, that we're making a comparison to. And I'm stuck on that. And it's not about elections, it's about trying to do the right thing and be sure that we have a comparative, especially since we elected not to go down the path of an RFP and put this out for response. We even have a higher standard, in my mind, to be sure. So with respect to questions, the question for me is not whether or not the work that's been done to this point, I actually think the foundation for this has been pretty good in terms of getting to this point, but to leap to an award to one bidder who has submitted without a comparative bid side-by-side with somebody that can do it, whether it's EF Johnson, or Motorola, or anybody else for that matter. I understand the issue about Motorola, and I think David made some good points the other night. He just doesn't see that happening in terms of the relationship and the deficiencies and the history. But at the same time in business, if you have somebody that you have got issues with, and there are some indications in the materials that I've looked at, the town has some role in culpability with some of the problems with Motorola, you have leverage with that vendor to at least present side-by-side. And if, in fact, Motorola were to present something to us that amplified and enhanced our awareness of whether this $3.6 million was the right number, and we elected not to pursue them because of the previous history, we're not harmed in that way. But I think we are harmed if we vote on this without some comparison. Everybody's entitled to make their own comfort zone. There's a lot of technical information in this that I don't think anybody at the diocese feels comfortable being able to say with great confidence. I understand, I've read through this material three or four times, and it's still pretty heavy stuff as far as data and technology, so I have to rely on the good faith of our consultant and John and Ray Ann. I can't get there because we don't have that comparison. It isn't that I have any inference that Harris may not be the very best option for us. And the last thing I want to say, and I've said this in a few emails to our councilors, I don't feel we've established foundation with the public on this to go from where we were in terms of discussion as a council behind the scenes leading to this, and then presenting to our public and voting on it, without, in my mind, at least some public hearings, some public discussion, perhaps police and fire going in the community and describing the importance of this system, why this big-ticket item is necessary, it obviously is necessary, but have we really done the foundation to get our community there? We're spending their money, I think we gotta get them there, and I don't see that we've done that, so.
Councilor Yalster?
So just real quick, I mean, I agree with several comments in terms of an RFP process. Ideally, you do want competitive bids, but to John's point, you know, six months ago, we made, or more, we made a decision not to go down that route primarily for security reasons. We didn't want to make it public about the reliability of the current system, as well as the lawsuit that we had on the table. So as a council, fortunately or unfortunately, we made a decision a long time ago to go down this route and to follow this process that we're following today. Now, we don't have a side-by-side comparison. What we do have is a comparison of the system we already have in place. And that system ran almost a total of $3 million after all the change controls to buy an outdated product, day one, that we've been having problems with for 10 years. Now we're buying state-of-the-art technology, a standard system with performance guarantees for $3.5 million 10 years later. So if that's the only comparison we have, I'd say that that's a pretty good price right now. And to risk going through the RFP process, to risk the security and safety of the public, as well as risk the pricing that we have of $3.5 million on the table right now, as a councilor, I'm not willing to put the town residents at risk like that.
Councilor Drake?
Excuse me. I was gonna say, the process we went through and decided, Tom decided a year and a half ago to do this for highly technical equipment, this is not a strange way of doing it. I mean, based on our system in the last 10 years technically not working correctly, I think having the technical solution first was far more important than the dollars. And I'm not a conservative's job, but I'm right behind him on this thing. I don't want to spend more money than we want to spend, but we had to go out and figure out, and the staff spent a long time, over 10 years of learning what we want, we know, I'm very confident that the staff knows what we want and knows what we don't want, especially with the consultants that we hired. If we open this an RFP at this point, we know who would bid this thing at this point, who the extra people would be, and I'm gonna kind of go back, I just don't see Motorola being part of this. And all due respect to Marcus, and I'm with John, everything says they do, you know, where they are, they do great work, but I just think this is at a level a little different than we're looking at, and technically, again, I think we know what we want. And based on what everybody's said and everybody's looked at, the number is probably a pretty good number at $3.6 million. So at this point, I'll be honest with you, I'm real comfortable, because I tell you, we don't want to, again, I don't want to spend more than we need to spend, but jeez, I don't want someone to be back here 10 years looking us up and say, just the town council screwed this up again, technically. I mean, I'm gonna say it again, this, whatever we put in, I don't want to spend more than we need to spend, but it has to work, and we spent the last year and a half working on to fill the holes, it has to work. And again, if Motorola And again, if Motorola came in through us a bid, I'd be willing to bet they would be, based on even these conversations listening, they would lowball it just to get where we need to go, and maybe that's a good thing, but I think we'd be in a bad situation again in a couple of years. So I'm really uncomfortable, because 10 years ago, and Paul, you brought it up, I think the town maybe screwed up a little bit, maybe Motorola screwed up, we went the cheap way, and not to say I don't want to, I don't want to spend more money, but I don't want to just do the cheap solution to get this thing done on the cheap end. So I'm very comfortable where we are right now, and I think we want to keep going.
Just want to follow up too, on the, you know, the matrix comparing all the bidders, the ones that Keith, and Keith, you can jump in, but basically, there's three manufacturers in the market that basically claim to have this type of a system that we want, and out of all of them, Harris met as the only one that met all the criteria that we had, and one of the most important ones was the smartphone gateway, which was, you know, good for our school system, and maybe Rayanne can talk about that as a difference between, you know, these manufacturers.
Sure. One of the things that we've been struggling with is how to provide radio communications for our school system. Right now, we're looking at the acquisition of about 60 additional radios for the schools, many of which will be used in each school by the staff, for example, especially in the elementary school, when they take the kids out for recess, they want to take a radio out with them in case there's an emergency, they can push to talk and be right back to dispatch and get help. But a couple of things. One is that the radios are bulky, and I think one of the officers perhaps could show one for me to show the size of the radio. So there they are, that's the size. The nice thing about the Harris system is a product called Beyond. It's an application that runs on a smartphone, and it requires a server for it to work, but essentially, if we put the application on a smartphone, it turns the smartphone into a radio that can talk to, back to the radio system, and Harris has included that server for it, and I believe 25 users in this proposal, so we can add them at about $300 a person, plus the smartphones, many of which are already issued in the schools, instead of doing a $2,000 to $4,000 radio for those. And that is one function that the other systems don't have yet.
Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to call the motion.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Townwide radio system authorization for the town manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Harris Corporation for the design, purchase, and installation of a complete three-site radio communication system. And Dolores, we had a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Who's that, the roll call?
Yes.
Counselor Drake?
Yes.
Counselor Hurley?
Yes.
Counselor Cocken?
No.
Counselor Manusos?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Martinere?
No.
Deputy Mayor Consul?
Yes.
And Chairperson Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you.
And for the record, I would just like to report that Counselor Roberts is away on vacation out of state, and because this was a special meeting, was not able to be here tonight. And next, we have on the agenda is the lease agreement authorization for the town manager to negotiate and execute a lease agreement for the purchase of the radio communication system. Can I have a motion, please?
I don't have it in front of me. So moved?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. As part of the financing for the system, our interim finance director, Linda Savitsky, went out to bid to get quotes on lease rates, and First Niagara had the lowest rate over the term of the proposed financing, 10 years, at 2.25, 2.255%. So staff is recommending to accept the proposal from First Niagara.
Any questions?
Rayanne, was this a change from what we were specifically told before?
Yes. We had actually did a test in the market in February, and then again in May, and the rates were 1.76, and it went down a little in May to roughly 1.75, and unfortunately, the market is changing, so the rates are back up.
And you've done a calculation of the difference in costs and all, I'm sure the finance department's done that already?
Yeah. The original lease was for 3.5 million, and it was about $6,000 per payment, so about $12,000 a year. The first, on this lease, the first payment will be due sometime in 2014, and it'll be only one payment in the first year, and then it's two payments a year after that, and so it's roughly $12,000 a year more. And then we added the $100,000 for the paging system to the cost of that, and that adds another $4,000, $8,000 a year, so we're talking $20,000 a year more.
And the paging systems for the fire department?
The paging system for the fire department will replace their entire call-out system except for the pagers they hold in their hands, but it'll replace all the infrastructure. The list cost for that is about $232,000, and it's included in the proposal for $100,000.
Okay. And I know we've asked this question before, the difference, and if you can't answer it, I understand off the top of your head, but the difference from what our costs are now by the radio system per year now to this new system, do you have, just roughly, do you have that?
Yeah. Well, we have about $200,000 a year budgeted right now in the radio system for it. It's hard to talk about it because what we're really doing is we're balancing our CNEF budget with this so that the impact, and Jeff, do you remember off the top of your head what the impact is annually when we go to two payments? It's about, go ahead.
The way we programmed it, and this was a meeting, I think, about two months ago, we did, we did a rollout of the CNEF fund with the proposed leases that you see this evening, and with the ones you've seen next week with the current leases included with the money that's included in the CNEF fund, with the money that's included in the radio budget, and we, as we got to full rollout, which would mean the lease payments along with the annual maintenance fees, we didn't see an increase necessary until year two or three, and then we would step it up over time to roughly $150,000 to $160,000 delta in year three or four.
So, just to follow up on that, to make that clear, because I think Counselor Cocken, when he made his remarks about the cost of this, this isn't like new money, this is programmed, and it's in our packet here in the binder that everybody has on the impact to the budget. So basically, we're not increasing the budget until we get to two, three, and four, which is only $50,000 a year?
Yes, that's correct.
But it is an increase.
It's an increase of 50, but it's hardly the thing, I think, that maybe the impression, maybe Mr. Cocken has given.
Yeah, basically a replacement of existing costs.
That's not factored.
I'm good. Thank you.
I was going to make a statement, though, that in the town hall, there's actually money we're spending every, you know, year in the town hall financing, that's part of that radio station, and that will, if you really want to get into, that would fall off.
Yeah. What's the bond is paid for from the police department?
But in that is the radio station.
Right, I understand that.
Any other questions, discussion?
Yeah, if I could, just to be, just to be clear, I never indicated that the $4 million was new, I guess, new spending. The question's whether you spend $3.6 million on a system plus $400,000 in financing costs without essentially comparison shopping. So that was my point, it wasn't that this was all new, and if I left that impression with anybody in the room, I didn't mean it.
I didn't take it that way.
Any other comments? We have a motion on the floor. Dolores, should we do a roll call?
Counselor Drake?
Yes.
Counselor Hurley?
Yes.
Counselor Cocken?
No.
Counselor Manusos?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Martinere?
No.
Counsel, Deputy Mayor Consul?
Yes.
Chairperson Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, updens, thank you.
Good night, Keith.
He's sleeping all day.